Welcome to the Annual Meeting of the Open Town Council on Wednesday 15th of May 2019. It is now six thirty-four, the meeting is commenced at. So extend a warm welcome to members of the public, thank you, welcome. And also to all the existing, the previous councillors and all the new councillors that have just been voted on at the election. We'll cut straight into the chase and we'll be going through the item one with the election of the chairman. This is where people can nominate themselves, they can nominate the people who'd like to be chairman. When we've done this in the past, we've done this by a signed ballot, because there's normally one person that is nominated. Well, that seems to have been the history recently. So that has to be agreed by three members. So straight away from the chair, I'm going to make the proposal that we do it by a signed ballot. I'd need two other members to support that. So Sally and councillor Woodley. I'll say that as a second, we've got councillor Buckston as well, so if everybody's in favour, let's just have a show of hands to make sure. Yeah, it just makes it easier. Now, what that does mean, just to explain, that when we have the people that are nominated, and I'll come back in a minute, everybody will get a piece of paper and you all have one vote. In other words, let's say that, let's say that Chris is, I won't be mentioning him today, he can't be, but let's say that Chris's name is nominated and Andy's name is nominated. If you want to vote for Chris, you would only use your vote for that person. And if you want to vote for Andy, you'd only vote for that person. So in other words, you can't vote to vote, you only have one vote. If there's more than two people in the running, let's say there's three people in the running, the person with the least amount of votes then is discounted and we recast it again. But everybody votes again, using their vote of where they want it to be, but only on the two remaining candidates. Okay? And as per standing orders, if there is a tight situation, the current chairman does have the casting vote. Okay? So, I'm from the chair. Actually, let me just say that the last year, I've actually had a really good year, and I said this at the town meeting, for those who didn't understand, I said I've had a really good year and I thought the council are doing really well. And I'm actually really quite pleased to see a lot of new faces around the table, because it means that there'll be lots of new ideas and lots of enthusiasm for doing things for the community that we live and work in. And this year, I've been supported very well, obviously by the Plarcs, as everybody now knows that the Plarcs' group is now qualified. And equally, I've also been well supported by the Deputy Chairman, which is councillor David Romney, which is why from the chair, the first nomination is going to come from myself, but I'm going to nominate councillor Romney to be the next chairman. Now, we need a second for that, which is councillor Buckston. Are there any other nominations?
I'm nominating Razzle, who's extremely experienced.
Okay, so councillor Ainsley has nominated councillor Razzle. Anybody who wants a second?
Councillor Rizell.
Rizell, is it?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Anybody who wants a second, councillor Rizell, that's councillor Walters. Any other people want to be nominated, your son for this? Mr Brooks is also a potential candidate. Okay, so what it is now, and just to make you aware, but even though this is a signed ballot, it's important that you only put one mark on this, the mark of the person that you want it to be, and you must sign it. If you don't sign it, it will be null and void. Pay that in mind, okay? And also, even though we're doing this as a signed ballot, it's still a public document after the meeting, so this can be requested in a way so people can see how you voted anyway. The only reason we're doing it like this is just to fix the way we're doing it. Okay, so what we also need to do now is mark your papers, when you're done it, sign it, and then hand it to the Plarcs, the Plarcs will check it. And I would suggest that it's, might we check it here? I think we should do it.
Do we do it?
Yeah. Yeah. It's exciting. Obviously, Chris and Andy, your hands on them.
You're liking it.
Can we, do you want to just check, actually, we have twelve pieces of paper back as well, just. Oh, before we've done this, it's been gone into the office, but I think tonight we should, let's have it all out here. Brilliant, okay, so if you want to sort them out as to who's got what. Okay, is that, say your name again, it's Chris.
Ian Rizell.
Rizell.
Rizell, yeah.
You're always called Zoe. I got, you just used to call England Joe, you need to change the name again. If you want to change your name to Joe, it's also.
I'm due a change, I'm ready.
What? You don't get any points for having names, you know. Okay. Yes. 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 So they're all four. Yes. 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 So is that, it was six of the six, wasn't it?
Two, three, four, five, six.
So.
Just one, the six.
So there are, there are six signed tickets for councillor Rizell, and there are six tickets for councillor Romney. So at this stage, the standing orders would apply to the chairman, who does have a casting vote, and I'll go with my original vote, so I will vote again for councillor Romney. So at this point in time, councillor Romney is now the new chairman of Open Town Council with the mayor, and I will now hand the change over. Thank you. We need to sign this. There's a form you decide to accept or to position. Yes.
So we need to sign that, please, please, we need to have an early sun bottom.
Congratulations. Brilliant, so we've changed, and before we get out of the way, I was going to capture a photograph at the point when we also get the deputy chairman in place, so then I don't want to put another, everybody in running and overcome through the misery of seeing my face in the papers again. So I was going to do it where whoever becomes a deputy, that they will, they will be pictured with the new chairman. Yeah, and good luck with that. It fell apart in something in the other week. It collapsed. Yes, most of it was there. Thank you, early members. We'll move straight on with the agenda. I will just say that I do hope I can live up to Haddon's level. Very happy to say that. And I hope that, you know, we can all work together, because we're all here for one reason, and one reason only, and that's the residents of Open. And let's see what we can do over the next four years, and see if we can really improve the town. Okay? So we'll move straight on to item two, which is declarations or acceptance of office of originality. Item three, apologies of absence, there are none. Item four, questions by councillors. Item five, declarations of interest, members are asked to declare if required, one, any disclosure of a few interests they may have, they may have under respect of an item on the agenda, and two, any other item of interest they may have in respect of an item on the agenda, and you can always update the book. When you've all, we will need to fill in the forms when we've all got your committees and working groups and that sort of, I think you've signed, haven't you?
Yeah, I've declared an interest in item twenty, the person is known to me, so I won't be, I'll stay in the room, but I won't be taking part in the vote.
Right. Item six, then, is election of vice chairman. To elect the vice chairman of the council, who shall be the deputy mayor of Open for forthcoming fiscal year. And I would like to start with my neighbours. I've worked very closely with this lady over the last year, and she works tirelessly for this authority, always putting her on concert bands and events, the Easter egg clubs. I would like to nominate on the chair councillor Sally Ann Woodley. Do I have a second? Any other nominations to give?
I'd like to nominate Ian Rizell.
Seconded? Sorry, I didn't see the one, thank you, councillor Woodley. We're going to go through the same process as we did with the mayor. Yeah, I mean, I was saying that we'd be doing it with my signed ballot, yeah, just be the third person to do it. Everybody in the favour of the signed up? Yes. Thank you.
I did actually abstain.
You don't abstain?
I do.
Oh, yes.
I'm just glad, man.
You'll say?
I abstained from the vote.
Oh, from the vote, sorry.
Thank you.
I've kept it down for you.
I might as well wait my next, we get them sitting down. I'd like to do that. Yeah, let's see, smash the smile, I have a break.
You're so big, aren't you? You're so big.
Oh, it's in the office. So my desk, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Who requested a hard copy of the paper, G?
Yes, please.
Sure. Do a pass on there. Yeah, so it goes more. It's kind of, it's not, it's not.
I need that to be made. That's why.
Does anybody else need a G?
Yeah.
Thank you. We've had a look at it, and it's six apiece. So being the chairman, I have the casting vote, and I'll stick with my original vote, and that's councillor Woodley. I'm the right side, we're a bit more equal than this. Yeah, I'm the right side. Who requested a hard copy of the paper, G?
Yes, please.
Sure. Do a pass on there. Yeah, so it goes more. It's kind of, it's not, it's not.
I need that to be made. That's why.
Does anybody else need a G? Thank you, mate, we've had a look at it, and it's six apiece. So being the chairman, I have the casting vote, and I'll stick with my original vote, and that's councillor Woodley. I'm the right side. Kind of right side there, we've got a bit more equity there.
Yeah, I was done, shoot down. There you go.
Don't take the table with you, son. Get it off.
Hi, Mr Brooks, can I just squeeze by, please? Thank you. Oh, well done. I'll come round for him, it's easy. I got, I got one of those away on there. Practicing, thank you. Right. Has everybody got their paper, G, that they were requesting? Yes, thank you. It's fair if anybody needs it, and then they find it. Good. Right, we'll move on to item seven, which is the minutes of the meeting held on the seventeenth of May. There will be, and those who are not voting on this, or so, the losers of voting on this will be councillor Low, councillor Woodley, councillor Glove, myself, councillor Neil, as well as any members that were actually present. But if members have got comments, I will take them. So we'll go through the minutes, anybody got any on the minute, and I'll take them on page one. If you have a comment, can you please tell us which minute it relates to? Because that would be, so page one, page two. Just, I'd like to pick up on seventy-six nineteen, it was raised about the charging points. And this is, and I think what we should do, I will bring a paper early on, so that we can probably set up a working group to look into depth into what's involved in it. Okay, just to keep you abreast of that one. So that's on page two, page three. I move from the chair, can I have a second to accept? Thank you, councillor Glove. All those in favour of the minutes? Are you unanimous for those of the...
So six, four, six. So initial each page two.
Item eight is members' reports. No, I, I, I'm, sorry, Chair, I was going to do a report on the, this military committee that's been set up by the Lord Lieutenant recently, however, the formal minutes haven't come through from our CEC, so I wanted to wait for them, so I was going to say that then, over here. Anybody else have any thoughts from there? Okay, number, item nine, don't turn that outside of the public. Mr Brooks, could you tell us what item it is, please?
On the chairman, and on the minutes, and the accounts.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a...
On the chairman, yeah, on the chairman, very quickly, congratulations. But I would hope that the new chairman would realise and look at the good councillor guide, and according to the deputy as well, that you don't run this council, you just chair meetings and sign documents, because that's been a big issue for me over the last few years. But anyway, hopefully this is a new start, a new beginning. Before I was not elected back onto the council, there was some discussion about how minutes should be presented and how they shouldn't be verbatim. And in this evening's minutes, there's a comment about me when I was a councillor regarding the chairman asks for something to be minuted, that should not be in there, so I would hope in the future that that sort of thing is not included in the minutes. And moving on to the accounts, I'm very interested to know, and I doubt I'll get the answer this evening, to know why at the budget meeting, we were told that there were reserves somewhere in the region of, you know, let's just say off the top of my head, a hundred thousand pounds. Following months, the accounts show that we have more than the preset in the bank. And I want to know, because it's still current that position, how the council is going to explain that on its annual return to the auditors, because we, as a council, or you as a council, should not have that amount of money in the bank. If you have over a hundred percent of your preset, you have to have a very good reason. And as a knowledge of this council, I don't see any new projects, any plans for new projects, so as far as I'm concerned, under the audit act, holding that money is actually unlawful.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm sure the new finance committee will...
Project manager.
Oh, yes, if you wish, yes, I have a few.
We haven't spent the money yet.
Well, we've already passed the year. Sorry, Carl, but we've already, you've already gone into a new financial account, a new financial year, so you've...
Glad to explain. No, 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 no doubt the new finance committee will look at it.
Yeah, it needs a big shake-up.
And thank, and thank you for your participation. Right, item ten, appointment of standing committees, standing committees. So we have, this is off page C, so we have, so we only have the recreation, planning and general purposes committee, all members will sit on that, and they will elect their chairman at their first, perhaps, at the first meeting. And the other standing committee is the staffing committee, which we all need some nominations for on that. Is chairman automatically, is I as chairman, are automatically members, so we need four extra, no councillor?
May I comment, please, Chair?
Correct.
May I comment?
You may, yes.
Thank you. The decisions required initially are to decide whether the current committee structure is suitable for the council and to create any changes. Might I suggest that as new members, we should not amend any changes at this stage, but that we continue as we are, but review them within three months, in case we believe there is a more efficient structure. Maybe the structure sixteen, maybe sixteen eighteen, that was a month ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, the policy and procedures committee can, will have the right to, we did review the structure of the council, not last year, the year before, if I remember rightly, and it's just the way, so the policy and procedures committee will be able to have a look at that and bring any changes that they, they feel is necessary. I will allow you to come back, but you've got to get...
Yeah, I'm grateful for the answer, but I'm aware of the six-month rule, so I don't matter if it was minuted, but we are always reviewing it within three months, Chair.
The councillor, Chair, I've been on staffing already on Open Town, and so I'm going to prepare ourselves. So, any other nominations for staffing, I haven't been on one anyway, so, anybody else? Councillor Neil, councillor Low, councillor Rizell.
I'll accommodate myself.
You'd like to make yourselves, so we have, do you have, well, we've got more, more people than we've got seats. If you want to do this by, sign the ballot again, or if you want to do the chair of hands?
Chair, sorry, can we just ask a query?
It says that it's recommended that this committee should have five members.
Yes, the restructure came up with that there would be on staffing, recommending there were five members on the committee.
So, but can we not actually accommodate more of it?
It's a recommendation, Chair, of the policy.
Well, it was part of the policy of the...
Can you see the policy? It's a recommendation, then, that's one thing.
I mean, we need, we need to have more people on the, on the, on the staffing, that's not a problem, but you don't want twelve people sat at a meeting for two members' flat.
There's a lot of new, with respect, there's a lot of new councillors here, so it's an opportunity for those councillors to engage with councillor Grace in a better way.
Yeah, better. Chair, at the end of the day, it says on there that it's recommended, minimum of five, if more people want to stand on it and the council decided to create it, I don't think they need to review the policy tonight, anyway. So I, I, I support what councillor Rizell says.
I'd defer to you, you said there's a policy, if you can see it.
Yes, yeah. Alison, don't bother.
But probably minutes, policy exists.
I don't know, it's counted as a policy.
Yes, yes, minutes that there is a policy, and if we can see that with some urgency, please.
We're going to have to go along.
If you like to make the point that it's counted as a policy, then we can, you know, let's go with the policy, is there a certain policy?
We didn't, if I remember rightly, because I wrote it, we didn't actually specify a number, we just said there should be at least five members.
Should be at least five, so...
Because the trouble was, before we did the restructure, you had a lot of committees of one.
Sure.
So is it fair to say you could withdraw the comment that it's a policy, and it was actually a recommendation?
Well, yes, yeah, we could have said so, we could. So, we're up to councillor Glove, we just need a second of councillor Glove. Councillor Woodley, councillor Ainsley, we need a second of all, councillor Woodley again. Any other nominations? No? All those in favour of those members standing on that, on the committee?
We do, I'm lucky.
Yeah, that's unanimous, thank you.
Can we just clarify, which six?
Myself, councillor Low, councillor Neil, councillor Rizell, I get your name wrong, swear to you, councillor Glove, and councillor Ainsley. Chair, I've got a point of order, I need to ask the Plarcs a question in private.
Chair, you've suspended me.
Chair, you've suspended me adjourned? No. He's going to form, I know, I know, I cannot deny you what it is. It's not, it's not, it's not for me to, exactly, it is, you're on a classification, I think, on county council places.
I'd like to know, I think this is inappropriate.
Completely inappropriate.
Okay. I'm chairing the meeting, and at the end of the day, I'll give them, I'll give them information, ask the Plarcs a question. Sorry, Chair, I've got a point for my own benefit, but, thank you. You've just caused havoc anymore.
No, with respect, Mr Chair, it wasn't causing havoc, we were just asking, it says a process for stepping out, through the Plarcs, and you said that there, it's your decision, so if that means it is your decision to do that, then a point, thank you.
Right, we'll move on then swiftly to item ten, appointment of standing working groups. So, page, have you been looking? Page eleven, page eleven. So you've got the, so the working groups are, policy and procedure, which is a minimum of four members, finance, which is a minimum of five members, promotion and publicity, which is a minimum of four members, the neighbourhood plan is two members, and the floral is a minimum of three members. And I'll just remind members of all the working groups, that they are working groups and not committees, so therefore they have no delegated powers, and standing order twenty-one, B, C and D does apply, you have no, you cannot instruct contractors, just to make that plain. So, we'll deal with who wants to go on the policy and procedures. The I as chairman are on there automatically following the reshuffle, the restructure. Councillor Woodley, you know?
I'd like to nominate myself, please.
Councillor Woodley, I'll second councillor Woodley.
And Chair, if you'd like, to nominate myself, please.
Yep, councillor Rizell.
Can I ask, Chair, do I remain on the group, or...
No, you need to nominate yourself.
That I won't nominate myself.
Councillor Ainsley.
Yeah, nominate myself, please.
So I need a second of councillor Rizell, councillor Glove, and for councillor Ainsley, councillor Lewis. I'll second councillor.
Your second, Paul?
Councillor Lewis, it's it.
And his second, for you.
I do that. That's one, two. So the nominations are myself, councillor Woodley, councillor...
Can I just clarify which six?
Myself, councillor Loeb, councillor Neil, councillor Razzell. I get your name wrong, swear to you. Councillor Gluff and councillor Ainsley. Chairman, I've got a point of order, I need to ask the Clough question in private.
Hi, Liam, thank you.
Yeah, the meeting's...
Chair, does the meeting adjourn?
No. This is going to form part, no, I cannot deny you what it is.
Sorry, you're sharing.
It's not, it's not, it's not for me to, exactly, it is, you're on a classification of thing on county council.
I'd like to note, I think this is inappropriate.
Completely inappropriate.
They should be made aware of it.
I'm chairing the meeting, and at the end of the day, I'll give them information to ask the Clough question. Sorry, Chairman, I just, it's a point for my own benefit, but... You've just caused havoc anymore.
No, with respect, Mr. Chairman, it wasn't causing havoc, we were just asking if there's a process for stepping out with the Clough. And you said that there, it's your decision, so if that means it is your decision to do that, then a point, thank you.
Right, we'll move on then swiftly to item ten, appointment of standing working groups. So, page, have you been looking? Page eleven, page eleven. So you've got the... So the working groups are: Policy and Procedure, which is a minimum of four members; Finance, which is a minimum of five members; Promotion and Publicity, which is a minimum of four members; and the neighbourhood plan is two members; and the floral is a minimum of three members. And I'll just remind members of all the working groups, that they are working groups and not committees, so therefore they have no delegated powers; and standing order twenty-one, B, C and D does apply. You have no, you cannot instruct contractors. Just to make that plain. So, we'll deal with who wants to go on the Policy and Procedures. The I as chairman are on there automatically following the reshuffle, the restructure. Councillor Woodley?
I'd like to nominate myself, please.
Councillor Woodley, I'll second councillor Woodley.
And Chair, you've got to nominate yourself, please.
Yep, councillor Razzell.
Can I ask, Chair, do I remain on the group or...?
No, you need to nominate yourself.
That I won't nominate myself.
I'll second that. Councillor Ainsley?
Yep, nominate myself, please.
So I need a second of councillor Razzell, councillor Gluff; and for councillor Ainsley, councillor Lewis.
Woodley's, yeah.
I'll second councillor Lewis. And we go there.
Who's second, Paul?
Councillor Lewis, sit.
And second of the year.
I do that. That's one, two. So the nominations are myself, councillor Woodley, councillor Razzell, councillor Neil and councillor Ainsley. Any other nominations? All those in favour, please, Chair? That's unanimous, thank you. Finance, then, minimum of five members. I'd like to nominate myself. Oh, councillor Lewis. Councillor Lewis. Chairman, I'll probably nominate myself as well. Okay. Councillor, do you have another councillor Woodley?
I'd like to add a second.
Councillor Walters. Councillor Gluff. I'll nominate myself as well.
Five, I need a second of...
I'll second.
George.
George.
I need a second of David, councillor Neil. I need a second of councillor Lewis. And I need a second of councillor... I've got five.
So we have myself, councillor Loeb, councillor Loeb, councillor Walters, councillor Gluff.
Do you say a number?
So there are eight nominations, all those in favour, please, Chair? Unanimous, thank you. Promotions and publicity. Councillor Walters, I'll second that. I'd like to, carry on. Councillor Denia, I'll second that as well.
Yeah, I'd like to continue.
Paul, councillor Buckston.
I'd like to propose myself, please, Chair.
Anybody else? I need a second of Paul. And, thank you. And a second of Zoe, councillor Woodley. Anybody else want to go on?
We've split the table, we've seen.
Yes, so we got...
I've got, you second Jean.
Yeah, Jean. We've got councillor Denia, councillor Walters, councillor Buckston and councillor Neil. All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. We're forward to some more group promotions in the year. Have we still got nominations, please? Uh, sorry, group.
We could do this, I was thinking as well.
Right, neighbourhood plan, steering group, two members required, councillor Gluff.
I don't anticipate next year.
You don't? Councillor Gluff, are you going to second councillor Gluff?
I wouldn't.
Second of my councillor Buckston? Anybody else?
Can I just ask, put on clarification before I come on there. With the status of the neighbourhood plan, is this going to finish?
I'm going to ask councillor Loeb to be done, so I don't see us out at the moment. I'm the steering group at the moment, aren't you? The question was, how long will it go on? Which one? Neighborhood plan, I would say that probably less than a year.
Well, I would say...
I'm looking at, I'm going to, Chris Clark is the chair of that, and I, we're going out to...
We're doing a nomination voting consultation, which finishes on fourteen June. There is a process of reviewing the feedback we have from the residents. It then goes to, we have a meeting, Regulation sixteen consultation, which is another six weeks. After that, it goes to assessment, so I'm hoping six months, less than that.
My best calculation is six months, Chair. So councillor Woodley, you...
I'm just trying to debate whether I can do it as a county councillor without the county's interest. So I'm not sure.
Chair, that at some point it will come to the county house, so we'll rule that for the county council vote. Then that comes from the self way, so...
Anybody else? Well, I, at the end of the day, I'm currently on it. I know the councillor Buckston wants to come off it because of these bullet commitments. If I'm on it and I'm also a county councillor, when it comes to the county council vote, then it would mean that I'd have to abstain and not vote. That's more difficult than that, yes. So I'll stay on it. Everybody else is going to put their name forward? So councillor Loeb, I'll second that. So we've got councillor Gluff and councillor Loeb to sit on the neighbourhood plan steering group. All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. Floral is a minimum of three members, most floral, councillor Gluff. You know, the second did, oh, my councillor Ainsley, councillor Buckston?
Yes, I do.
I'll second councillor Buckston.
So a second then, not...
Oh, I'll read it, yes, I'll read it. Anybody else want to go on? We need another member.
We do have a rep from Open in Bloom, which we can donate as well.
Buckle?
That's three to Tom.
Oh, yes. Another member, please. Nobody, what, nobody interested in flowers? Councillor?
Sorry, I thought this was our, I'd be representative, I didn't know what the floral group is, is that...
No, the floral group is, is set up to look at the floral display that we have around the town. Not, nothing to do with open input, it's a separate item.
Oh, well done, I'll...
Councillor Woodley, second, I'll second councillor Woodley. So that's councillor Gluff, councillor Buckston and councillor Woodley for the floral. All those in favour, please, Chair? I've got, yeah, two of the new country. Thank you very much.
We've got additional two.
Yeah, we've got additional two, which is the Christmas lights. Yes. I'll second councillor Buckston, I think we got a lot of praise last year. There is, there is no number on this, I would like to refer more than one. Councillor, oh, no, careful. Councillor Neil, councillor Woodley, are you, councillor Gluff, are you...
I'll second him too.
I'll second councillor Neil.
Councillor Neil, I'll second councillor Woodley. So that's councillor Buckston, councillor Neil, councillor Woodley for the Christmas lights. All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. And the RHCT, which is the Brooklyn House Community Trust. Jean? Oh, no, I'm not there.
You need a second of that, if you need a second of that.
Yeah, somebody can read it.
Sorry, yes, we, we own some land on Willow Crescent, which has got the Brooklyn Housing Trust lease uppers. And they are looking at redeveloping the site with an extra extension. And this is the little group that's organising what the council's response is to that, how we're going to lease and so on and so on. Councillor Gluff?
Do we got that, are we through the working party?
No, no, we're still going. Do you want to go on, Neil?
Yes, well, I was before, yes.
You would like to go on as well, yes? Councillor...
I need a second of that.
A second of that for you, please. Oh, councillor Razzell. Anybody else? That's three, so we've got councillor Denia, councillor Neil and...
No, so councillor Denia, councillor Loeb.
Hold it, or something.
These are the second of that.
I'll read it on call, yeah.
Denia, Loeb.
All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. So, so the rest of the group, so item twelve, representatives on other organisations, appendix D. Eleven outside bodies, we're nominating, of course. I'll tell the first one, run them together. That's me, so...
Could I just say something about these groups, please?
Can you sign that on?
Yes, yes, I shall sign. Last year was the first time that I was involved in this situation where you put yourself forward or people ask you to sit on the group. What isn't told you at this time is when the groups are going to meet, what in fact you're there for, and what happens when you can't attend groups that you didn't know when they were going to meet, and that's the reason you can't attend. The example I'm giving on this is one for the access group. Nobody told me, it was on a Wednesday, I work three days a week, so consequently I now could attend, which doesn't look very good on my list of not attending. I wrote to them several times to say why I couldn't attend. The other one was quite a joke. I'm sorry to say that, but it's true. It's Open United Charities. I spent a lot of time emailing this group, constantly asking, when are you going to meet? What do you want of me? Can I have information about your charity? Because I didn't get anything. And it turns out that they had one meeting later on in the year and never did get any information. And they told me a few days before when the meeting was going to be. And again, I was working. So whilst I have no objection to representing the council on these groups, I think before you take something on, I think you should have the information about what your role is, when the meeting, how often, and what you're actually there for. Because I fell into this trap last year and I felt very uncomfortable. That's a serious situation to do with access in the town I couldn't go to. And I felt that that was wrong because we didn't have a voice. So I'll just make that comment before you all get excited.
I think, picking that point up, I think if anybody is nominated to anything and you find, A, that it conflicts with work, then what my advice would be would be come back to the council, tell the Clark you're not able to carry out, and we'll just reelect somebody else. Because, you know, a lot of we take things on and sometimes you can take on too much or you just haven't got the time. And we can always, we can always change it round. Councillor Lewis?
Sorry, just a question, wouldn't we be as well upon the information then before we...
We could, yeah, we could defer it.
Um, the, the outside bodies were written to and said how many vacancies they wanted.
That doesn't tell us when it is or where it is.
A lot, a lot of these just have had off, have hot meetings, anyway.
If you could say something to the general head up, then we'd probably appreciate that.
Yes, yeah. What do you want?
Sorry, I might propose that we defer this.
Yeah, I was going to say, do you want to...
And we, I think we go a thorough review, please. Actually, obviously, because it seems to me that, given your...
Do you want to come in?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, military commemorations. I've got thirty-two years' experience in the military, I don't need advising what we do. So if that exception is agreed by council, I can be there, I will be there, I'm a veteran. So if that exception can be accepted, I will take that responsibility on.
Who would help that last year? I'd be the report for that. Memorations.
Military commemoration, well, the military commemoration was actually, it's only recently just started. As you're aware, we have the Wilmer One commemoration stuff that lasted for the four years, two fourteen, two eighteen. And then Lord Attent, Dr. Sarah Finesse, she came up with this idea that to help capture all the events that go off moving forward, because we've got, for instance, the D-Day and there's really more of them, this year. And she thought it'd be a really good idea that people from the councils came together so that we can, like, you know, the liberal organisations, that we capture good ideas. I've been to the last two meetings, I was never formally appointed to that because it was an idea that came after we picked up the ball and ran with it. I'm more than happy to allow you to carry that forward and I'll make you vote against it, that's perfect. Do I have a second of councillor Ainsley? I'll afford a minute on us. Everybody, all those in favour of councillor Razzell representing the council on the nomination?
Thank you for the eyes, I'm staying. Thank you.
And so, can I have a motion that we defer the rest? Oh, sorry.
I would agree that we should defer, we should do some research. I noticed it, it says trustees of Victoria Hall want vacancy. But actually on the Victoria Hall side, they say that they have three representatives from the town council. So we get publicity to...
They, councillor Razzell? They, yeah, what it is, that a lot of the constitution that's set up by these trusts have always said they want X amount of people. So historically, over the, literally the fifty, sixty years, organisations like this one have had X amount of representatives from this council. And also, they're meant to, not mentioned, they also recommend in their constitution to have X amount of members from the Brooklyn County Council. However, with commitments and with actually what they do now and actually how important their role is, it's an important role, but actually what these people contribute means that the requirement is not so much. This last year, there were, there was councillor Neil, myself and councillor Bottomley on there. So that was the three people, so that's why I said it's one vacancy on there, in fact. But I totally agree, we need to, they think they should be four, but we're near that three. But I do think that we need to review it because in fact I would probably sit down for the Victoria Hall this year. Thank you. Councillor Ainsley?
Just want to make a point about St George's Barracks, is that something that we can agree on? People, that seems to be quite pertinent for them.
I, Chairman, in actual, I would say that where there is, because getting back to the point that councillor Denia made, where councillors get sometimes asked to attend some of these outside organisations and they go and they're not informed and they don't know what they're going for and they don't get minutes and they very rarely get contacted. But this particular one here, the St George's, the remit, well, in fact, was very simple, a bit like the town centre one, which is now being called something else. We go along to capture the feedback and give it in reports to the council. And in fact, the St George's one is very key. So in fact, I would say out of all of them, if we did defer the majority, that that one, I would agree, we probably could appoint somebody deceiving. Also probably suggested appoint councillor Ainsley. No, I would, okay, if so, I like you. I latch on to your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, we're, yeah, we're, yeah. Okay, yeah, I mean, yes, you want to nominate? I was, Chairman, I was, yeah, I mean, I, I'm picking up on the vibe of Canada. Angus is quite enthusiastic about that, and if he's agree, I would promote that he is the ten thousand representative. Quality is up in the fire, Chris, now. So yes, is that what you, can I actually talk this up for you?
Let me just think about that for a couple of seconds.
Yeah, yeah.
No, thank you.
Does anybody else want to go on the St George's Barracks working group? Were you on there before, Nick?
No. It happened after.
Oh, councillor Bottomley, yeah. Okay.
Okay, I'll nominate myself.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much, sir. You have those in favour?
Oh, James.
I was quick. That's unanimous, thank you very much for that.
And sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I just answer as well? You talked about reports for council. Can we get a template for that, so they can back it up?
Yes, we have templates for making reports, the Clark will even mail that to everybody. Councillor Gluff?
Open in Bloom is a known quantity, can we do that one as well, please?
Yes. Yes, with you, yeah. I'm just, I'm just trying to sort that out for all that, councillor Ainsley. Open in Bloom. Right, I'd like to continue. So that's councillor Buckston, councillor Gluff? I would second councillor Buckston. I would say, I am aware that councillor Buckston fulfilled the role as we don't have Open in Bloom. However, or he has to initially, however, you can still be representative on an organisation, but then when it comes to voting on anything in this chamber, all councillors then know that they have to abstain and not vote. So, you know, we can be, as long as we're open to put out now that organisations are... Thank you. So I've got a proponent, second of councillor Buckston, second of the councillor Gluff, councillor Neil. All those in favour? Oh, sorry, is there any more, anybody else want to go on? No, all those in favour? Unanimous, thank you.
Just one point, Mr. Chairman. The appointment of a tree warden.
Yeah, that's further down, that's further down, councillor. All right. The only other one, I think, if you're going to defer the rest, we don't have to defer item eighteen.
Can I just ask for a list of what we are deferring?
Yes, well, I'll get it from, from my working out, we've got Run them together, citizens of advice, trustees of Victoria Hall, Open United Charities, trustees of the Memorial Institute, little access group, parish forum, working party, and at the moment, we've got the partnership board at the moment.
The partnership and the board's not asking for representatives, they're just asking for...
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, that's okay. Chairman, may I come back? I think it's interesting because we were talking about deferring, however, we seem to be chipping away at this. And let me shed some light, Run them together, I actually checked with this, on the fourteenth of February twenty nineteen, I had an email come back from the Brooklyn County Council saying I missed a lot of meetings. I think you can strike that. Okay. We'll, we'll ignore that one, the Clark will investigate and if it, if it does need somebody, we'll come back on this. I'll afford the email on. Citizens of advice, historically, it's usually been the chairman of the town council normally goes on automatically, so that would be something to consider in a few minutes. goes on automatically, so that would be something to consider in a few minutes, and if I may then leap, I think you're going to go down to trustees of the Memorial Institute, I have been on that for the last year, it's the one that I would like to remain on for continuity, and I know that the Memorial Institute are okay with that, so in fact, I would like to request that I do remain on Memorial Institute, and I'm aware of the commitments and their constitution, and when I asked them if they wanted extra people, they actually said, well, you know, one councillor is fine, so if that helps, I'm happy to stay on Memorial Institute. councillor Ainsley?
I'd just like to make a point that there are a lot of newbies here who don't have the first idea of what these organisations represent, and therefore I think it would be really good to come back at a later date with lists and the commitments, etc.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. So, I need a second of councillor Low, councillor Neil. Well, we've had a nomination for the trustees of the Memorial Institute, the same as all the others, and that has been seconded, so we need to know whether we agree to the councillor Low to go on.
We said there was going to be an opportunity to understand if anyone else wanted to...
No, because with all due respect, we've filled some spots, and we're going to defer some others. My initial idea was to defer the whole paper, but members didn't want to do that, members wanted to fill in some of the vacancies, so that's what we're doing, so on that one, I'm now, the same as the military and the St George's Barracks, we've had nominations for that, I also now have a nomination for the trustees of the Memorial Institute, which is councillor Low, which has been seconded by councillor Neil, anybody else want to nominate for it?